Okay, we're ready to roll. Good evening, this is the meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022, in the Wacoit Meeting Room, sort of, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is 7:00. This is virtual remote participation broadcast live on local channel 18. Call-in conference number is 508-539-1400, extension 8585. We're streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, www.mashpema.gov backslash channel 18. First on the agenda, I ask you to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Very good, thank you. Next item on the agenda, approval of the meeting minutes from our January 19th meeting. Those were circulated earlier in the week. Comments, questions, suggestions, edits?
None.
Anybody?
Make a motion.
We have a second?
I'll second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, public discussion, do we have anybody on the line?
I think Lynn Barbie is on the line.
Okay. Lynn Barbie?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. Okay, Lynn Barbie, Surf Drive. I am excited about the local comprehensive plan process. I see that there's been some progress made in having a few more outreach, community outreach, but it's still not enough. We need charrettes every month, we need surveys going on for more than just a couple of months. There's, we need to have a whole other charrette in October. I just, I think we're, you know, we're making progress here, but it's still not enough, and I really hope that we can evolve this plan so that there is a lot more opportunity for community engagement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Eddie?
That's it. Nobody else for public discussion. Okay, we have an A and R on the agenda, Darren Gould, 36 Sunset Strip Mashpee, block 30, map 37, block 72A. Evan?
I actually just sent you an email in this regard. Rob Mills, the attorney representing the applicant, requested a withdrawal without prejudice petition. He did not submit to me the revised plan as the board had contemplated at your last meeting. So I did ask for that request to come through on letterhead, but I did not receive it. The email was forwarded to you just now.
Okay.
What should we do, this table, this?
I think the applicant would be requesting the board accept his withdrawal without prejudice for the potential for him to refile at a future date.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. All right, on to new business. Vote to set public hearing date for housekeeping zoning article related to the reclassification of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
If I speak, can you all hear me if I speak loud?
Yeah.
Right.
All right.
The, I feel like this is natural, I'm just trying to... Can you hear me now?
That's better.
All right, so the Attorney General, you'll see in your packets, the response from the Attorney General relative to the zoning article, zoning articles, as well as the general bylaws that were voted on and approved at the October town meeting. Relative to Article 1, which was the article that facilitated the change from the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, that article contained language that would have, that suggested to the town to modify, I want to say, two sections of the zoning bylaw where they used the term Board of Selectmen, but that article was never transmitted from the Board of Selectmen to the Planning Board, and thus you never held a public hearing on it. So while the Attorney General allowed and approved the articles that facilitated the name change to Select Board, they did not approve this portion of the article that would have changed the text of our zoning bylaw from Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So as a matter of housekeeping, the Town Manager's Office and Board of Select, the Select Board are requesting that we hold a public hearing on, on an article that would facilitate that change. I would suggest the first meeting in March. I don't have a zoning, an article for you yet because council's going to draft that, but I will have that before any public hearing you decide to move forward on. I would suggest the date of March 2nd, 2022, at 7:10.
We need a motion, I'm at.
Yeah.
Yes, I would like you to vote to set a public hearing date, one of your upcoming meetings. It doesn't have to be March 2nd, it could also be mid-March.
Well, I'd make a motion for March 2nd, to set a public hearing for the zoning change from Select, to Select Board.
At 7:10?
At 7:10.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All you need?
That's all I need, thank you.
All right. Second item under new business, approval of invoices submitted by Pechi Engineering for the following projects, Sherwin-Williams 314 Nathan Ellis Highway, South Cape Village Building G, 532 Main Street Preliminary Subdivision Plan, and the Casper Circle subdivision.
Just like we used to do with Charlie, I'm just looking for you all to authorize payments to Mr. Pechi for his inspections at the projects noted in the agenda. We have funds available for these submitted by the applicants, the requisite applicants. If you could, take them one by one, project by project, and approve each invoice, assuming there are no issues from your perspective. I would appreciate that.
I have one question. On the fourth item, I know we're going to do them one by one, but on the fourth item it says Casper Circle subdivision, is that the replacement name for Sari Place?
No, no, the preliminary subdivision plan is Sari Drive. Casper Circle was a subdivision approved pursuant to the Quashnet Valley Golf Club subdivisions back from 1973.
Yep.
And that's currently being built out.
Right.
So this was a long-approved subdivision that a developer is building out, who submitted funds for Mr. Pechi to do his inspections and, as he built out that subdivision. So we have those funds, it's a, it is a planning board-approved project, but it was approved decades ago.
Way back. Yeah.
The only reason I bring it up is one of the bills does reference Sari as the address.
Yeah.
And I thought we had asked them to change that, and I wanted to make sure we clarified that.
Yep, so that's actually, that's the 532 Main Street.
Okay.
And I am expecting a definitive filing for that. That would, it would not include Sari Drive, but if, as long as that doesn't impact your paying Ed's invoice, that's relative to 532 Main.
No problem.
Good question. Okay, so let's take them in order. Sherwin-Williams 314 Nathan Ellis Highway.
I make a motion to approve that bill.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
532 Main Street Preliminary Subdivision Plan?
I make a motion to accept the subdivision plan for $820.52.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
And the Casper Circle subdivision?
I make a motion to accept the Castle Bird subdivision for $1,628.40.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
These prices are higher than Charlie's, huh?
Yes, yes they are.
Whoa. Okay.
I think he saved them off though.
Inflation, inflation.
Yeah.
You all lucked out with Charlie for all those years.
We did.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Chairman's report, the only thing I have is a, I don't make a practice of commenting on letters sent to the Planning Board, however, in your package is a letter from Karen Faulkner, and it makes some sweeping assumptions, it's also got some factual inaccuracies in it, and I just, I need to address those. I don't know if you've had a chance to read the letter, it is in your package, it's part of the record, and for that reason, I'm just going to make some, some comments. At the outset of the letter, Ms. Faulkner claims that beyond the members of the Wampanoag Tribe, quote, "The rest of us came here in large measure for the abundance of open space, the ocean, and natural beauty," end quote. Ms. Faulkner claims to mention those, beyond our Native American friends who were born and raised here, they didn't come here, as she suggests we all did, they were born here. By claiming, quote, "The rest of us came here in large measure for the abundance of open space, the ocean, and natural beauty," Ms. Faulkner ignores those of us who came to this community to work and raise a family, teachers, doctors, lawyers, business owners, builders, police and firemen. When Sharon and I moved here 35 years ago, Mashpee was an affordable place for a young family to put down roots. Ms. Faulkner further claims that, quote, "Bostonians come here to get away from the everyday hustle and bustle of the city and to commune with nature," end quote. Cape Cod attracts people from not only Boston, but across the country and around the world, and they come to the Cape for a variety of reasons. To suggest all come to, quote, "commune with nature" is truly a leap. Ms. Faulkner references the goals of the current local comprehensive plan. Those goals were established in 1998, 24 years ago. The reason we're updating the LCP is to ensure that the goals of the plan reflect the needs and desires of the current community, a community that has most certainly changed since 1998. She falsely claims that last year, quote, "The owner of Mashpee Commons tried to convince the residents that urbanization would be good for Mashpee by offering to build 1.2 million square feet of commercial space and 1,710 residential units in a commercial activity center," end quote. In fact, the proposal was for an additional 600,000 square feet of commercial space, not 1.2 million, and between 1,000 and 1,200 new residential units, not 1,700. The developers stated publicly and repeatedly that these estimates were inflated due to the calculations required in the development agreement application, and that the actual numbers would be much less. Ms. Faulkner then claims that the Mashpee Commons efforts, quote, "failed because the majority of our residents said no," end quote. This is unequivocally false. The majority of our residents were never given the opportunity to say yes or no because a very small, very vocal group of residents chose to obstruct and disrupt the process to the point where it became unproductive and unsafe to continue. Many residents in our community were excited about the proposed 25-year plan, and were looking forward to learning more and participating in designing the final agreement. Unfortunately, the residents of Mashpee did not get that opportunity. The majority of residents did not say no, and Ms. Faulkner knows this. She is certainly entitled to her own opinion, she's not entitled to her own facts. She then goes on to criticize the consultants hired to help with updating the LCP. The consultants hired were vetted by the Town Planner and a subcommittee of this Planning Board. They were then further vetted, scored, and unanimously chosen by the entire Planning Board. Six months ago, Ms. Faulkner, among others, demanded that the town hire a host of consultants. Now that we engaged with a well-known and well-respected firm, she'd like to tell them how to do their job. We hired experts, let's leverage their expertise and experience, deeming the consultant's approach and recommendations as inadequate, flawed, and biased, before we've even gotten out of the gate, is at best helpful, unhelpful, and at worst, an attempt to taint the process and the eventual outcome. Ms. Faulkner concludes, quote, "Mashpee is the people's home, and any reasonable observation from the last six months clearly indicates that we do not want an urbanized Mashpee consisting of a small-city community activity center." I'm not sure who the "we" is that Ms. Faulkner speaks of, while Ms. Faulkner most certainly speaks for herself, she does not speak for the entire community. I'm excited about updating our local comprehensive plan and the process for community engagement and participation. I encourage everyone to embrace this opportunity with a positive attitude and an open mind. I invite everyone in our community to share the excitement, get engaged, and participate." Thank you for indulging me. Town Planner Report, oh, LCP update.
I have some updates, and, you know, I'm just going to get in. I want to state first that, you know, the comprehensive plan is a, a community-led process. This is a process that's designed to facilitate a framework for engaging the community on the important issues and challenges at hand, particularly as it pertains to our physical environment, whether that be built or natural or otherwise. And I think we're well on our way on designing a program that will achieve a very positive outcome in defining where we are going from here over the next five to 10 years. And we should all keep in mind that we are doing this to facilitate regular updates to this plan as we move forward. So this process itself is not the end, it's, it's the beginning, and hopefully something that becomes a regular, a regular practice for us as elected officials and certainly as staff. With that being said, a few updates. I noted at our last meeting that I would have additional conversations with the Mashpee Public Schools, as well as with the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. I had both of those meetings, they were wonderful conversations. The outcome of the conversations with Mashpee Public Schools has led to a proposal for significant youth engagement activities, whereas we'll activate participation from all grade levels from, you know, pre-K and kindergarten all the way through graduating seniors.
Cool.
So we're going to try and cater some activities that will be age-appropriate, that get the kids thinking about the place in which they live, and also to participate with us in some of our more formal processes. So the school administration was excited about our efforts, and I'll be looking forward to their feedback on our youth engagement proposals at a future date. I'd like to give them the opportunity to scrutinize it and understand what they're actually going to be able to implement, because most of these are, were designed and considered to have teachers do them independently with students. But I've noted that I'd make myself available along with our consultants for some of the bigger-name recommendations. So once they have had an opportunity to review and consider some of those activities, I'll make them available to you as well. I just want to give them that opportunity to scrutinize it first.
Evan, any idea whether it's this school year, next school year?
Well, the, the youth engagement lines up pretty well with our schedule as we've designed it, so we'd be looking to do this from then through March, through the end of their school year.
Okay, great.
And then our, our engagement will continue a bit further past the end, the close of the school year.
Yep.
But we could even have, like, senior project involvement, or, you know. One thing they did note, and I think is prudent, is that they are going to establish a student steering committee to work with us, or to, to work with me, and maybe we can train them to add some boots-on-the-ground capacity, et cetera.
Cool.
But it's nice to activate young people in these, in these processes, and they were excited about it.
Yeah, that's great.
Additionally, I met with our consultants today with Brian Whedon, the chairman of the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, and we had a very productive conversation. The tribe, the chairman is committed to assisting us in, in blast, getting the word out and supporting our engagement activities as they move forward, and he's establishing a liaison for us to communicate directly with the tribe as we move throughout the process. Additionally, in your packets, you'll have an updated schedule and consideration of some of our earlier scheduling challenges, resulting from my jury duty, and then from getting the procurement completed on time, or at least within a, what felt like a normal timeframe. Additionally, you also have in your packet an outline of, of the engagement program as it exists today. This is in draft form. Some of the comments I've been receiving in Town Hall, including, inclusive of Ms. Faulkner's letter, which I did respond to, and she did respond back, I just wanted to note that I appreciate her response. But we did receive some constructive feedback, and, and the constructive feedback that I've gleaned is essentially that certain members of the community would like to see additional conventional in-person workshops. And so I just want to remind the board of what we had discussed when we were working through a conceptual community engagement action plan sometime, it feels like maybe a year and a half ago, before we issued an RFP. And I had conceptualized and proposed a community engagement program that was inclusive of five total workshops, where we'd have a kickoff meeting, and then we'd have topical meetings where we would have, essentially, we would workshop around the built community and natural systems as they're defined in the RPP, and we could have focused conversations around those systems, whether, and that, that would also come after we would map place types, but this gets into my point about facilitating the structuring of this engagement activities that circles around the framework of the RPP.
Right.
So it's not being prescriptive about what places should be, it's just recognizing that the RPP is structured in a manner, and we can facilitate a community engagement program around that structure. So I think we could do five in-person, conventional design charrette-type workshops, but we need a few things. And I want to make very clear that, as proposed in your current breakdown, there are three big charrettes, workshops. They are big-ticket items in our budget. They, as, as they're proposed, that would include all of the Weston and Sampson team, all of the Bata Group team is doing our transportation chapters, and so we have those. If we are going to do more in-person workshops for budget purposes, we will need to run them and facilitate them at a, with less capacity, meaning it could probably be our two consultants, myself, and maybe some board members could assist with that facilitation.
Yeah.
And we would need to focus the topics of those conversations very well, but I think if there's interest to do additional workshops, that's the manner with which we would have to facilitate them. And I just wanted to, you know, raise that as a, as a potential to expand this program a little bit further, to make it a little bit more robust, while being cognizant of our budget and being cognizant of the proposal that our consultants have given us. And so if I get positive feedback from you to move in that direction, I'll speak with our consultants about updating this document and maybe thinking a little bit more about the structure of each of those workshops, to bring back to you at our next meeting for consideration and hopefully adoption of an engagement plan. Additionally, as I noted in prior meetings, we are going to be relying pretty heavily on a digital platform for community engagement, and we went through, we, being myself and our consultants, a number of digital tools to facilitate a community engagement program that the board is going to design and, and adopt, so that we can engage with residents, gain feedback in real time, and collect data as well, using a number of, of applications. We had, I want to make very clear that our review of community engagement platforms was, was considerate of primarily the contract's terms, the site's functionality, its aesthetic, and the cost. So in consideration of the, of those, of those variables, we narrowed it down to two, really, you know, two winners, essentially, Citizen Lab and Courbanize. They're both wonderful tools, they both offer a very similar package in terms of what you're able to do with the community, but ultimately Weston and Sampson and myself are recommending that we, we launch our community engagement platform utilizing Citizen Lab, primarily due to the difference in costs. Courbanize was very expensive. And so we also like the customization options of Citizen Lab. We can do a base package, and, and they'll allow us the flexibility to build out the site with various tools and programs as we, as we see fit in an iterative basis, and it's also would be something that would be easily carried over into implementation. So once we're done with community engagement, this is a website that could stay active in perpetuity to continue collecting feedback as we implement the goals and policies we've defined in our updated plan.
Right.
And it's something that I would need to consider in my future budgets, but that's our, it'd be really great to have this site live on as we, you know, get five years down the road and want to update our plan again. So we are recommending utilizing Citizen Lab for our community engagement platform. Another benefit of Citizen Lab is that they have a quick turnaround time. We could get this launched by the first of the month as we have planned. What else do we have?
Yeah, I went on, Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yep.
Oh, I went on Citizen Lab website, and I thought that, that fit this project well. It's a citizen-based approach, and, you know, it has a strong, you know, obviously, planning emphasis. So, yeah, I don't know, Evan, if we need to vote on that or what, but I think it's, it's a good choice.
I'm okay with the general consensus, it's a procurement-related matter, but I would just, I would just seek, I would seek the board's blessing on utilizing it.
Which, which option are they recommending?
Citizen Lab.
Yeah, no, but which, which pricing option?
Oh, I'm going to, we're going to opt for the, the low pricing option, because we can customize it as we move forward if we need additional tools.
Okay.
And so our, our contract with Weston and Sampson's around 127,000, and our appropriation's 150,000, so I don't want to eat up the, our cushion budget.
Right.
With the platform if we don't need to, but provide us with a little bit of flexibility with our budget to add tools if we, if we need.
Is there an advantage, there's a price advantage, is there, is there, would we consider more than one, one year? I mean, there's a one-year, two-year, three-year option on each of these.
We want it to match, we could, they have flexible contract terms, which is one reason why we selected them, so we could do like a custom package for the length of our engagement program.
Oh, great.
So we could do one, or 18 months, or, or 24 months.
Yep.
Ultimately, I need to, I wanted to get a general consensus from you before I reached out to Citizen Lab to define what the contract terms will be.
Okay.
I can just tell you, if you're okay with Citizen Lab, that I will ensure we have a program that gets us at least through our program, our engagement program, and is well within our budget.
And then maybe an option, to your point, maybe an option to keep it going afterwards.
Exactly, I would probably want to, yeah, that wouldn't be utilizing our town meeting appropriation, I would probably want to build it into my expense budget.
Yeah.
But I'll cross that bridge in the next fiscal year.
Great. Everybody, everybody good with that?
Yep, I am.
Joe?
Yeah, definitely good.
Jack?
I am too.
Good, yeah, good, nice work.
And so I just want to make-
I have some questions for Evan.
Go ahead, Mary.
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
So, yeah, you gave us, I'm sorry, I don't know how to share screens. All right, you gave us this document in our packet, right?
This one.
And that, is that what we wrote, the town wrote?
I can't see it, I'm sorry.
I can't tell which one she's looking at.
It's, it's Mashpee MA, Community Engagement Plan Purpose.
That, that was built off of what a conceptual, it was built off the conceptual document we attached to our RFP, but it wasn't exactly what we wrote. That was written by Weston and Sampson, modeled after the concept that we had designed.
Okay. So it's, it's just that this map on this, this chart, right? So all the words don't match in those two documents. So are we going to leave these words as is, or use the words that we wrote in our community engagement plan?
I'm not sure I understand the critique, but Mary, I, I, if you could, if you have a suggestion for modifying that chart in a manner that's consistent with the other document, I'd be happy to take that feedback in an email, and I'll go over with our consultant.
Yeah, I'd like to see it too.
What's that?
I just got confused because they used the word public charrette, and I didn't know what that was, and I called Evan earlier today, and he said that's what he would consider one of the five workshops that he wants to do.
Right.
I understand, so you just want to rectify that, those semantic differences, we can do that.
Use the same language.
And so it's, under February, it says in blue, it says site, it's supposed to say site visit, it just, the visit got cut off.
Correct, yeah, so I, the, our consultants, go ahead, I'm sorry. That, that was built off of what a conceptual, it was built off the conceptual document we attached to our RFP, but it wasn't exactly what we wrote. That was written by Weston and Sampson, modeled after the concept that we had designed.
Okay. So it's, it's just that this map on this chart, right? All the words don't match in those two documents. So are we gonna leave these words as is or use the words that we wrote in our community engagement plan?
I'm not sure I understand the critique, but Mary, if you could, if you have a suggestion for modifying that chart in a manner that's consistent with the other document, I'd be happy to take that feedback in an email and I'll go over with our consultant.
Yeah, I'd like to see it too. What's that?
I just got confused because they used the word public charrette and I didn't know what that was. And I called Evan earlier today. He said that's what he would consider one of the five workshops that he wants to do.
Right.
I understand. So you just want to rectify that, those semantic differences. We can do that.
Use the same language.
And so it's under February, it says in blue, it says site, it's supposed to say site visit. The visit got cut off.
Correct, yes. So our consultants, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Are we gonna do that all together?
I only have an 11-seater van and I have like, I have the DPW director, the police chief, myself, as well as the Beta Group team and Weston and Sampson. I don't have enough room in the van for the board.
All right. And then, okay, what else is there? You're funny. All right.
You got a trailer.
We haven't, really. Now, you had a stakeholders list somewhere, didn't you?
Yes, I have a stakeholders list.
It was in the last, last month's package.
Well, it still needs to be updated because I have a separate list that, I just need to combine all the lists because people are still emailing me stakeholders. So I'm still building it out. So what I'll do is for our next meeting, I'll compile that master list and provide it to you as well. And I also want to note, I did establish just a landing page for the LCP on our website while we're building out our engagement platform. All that is there now, I think, is the Weston and Sampson presentation. As you adopt documents, that's where I'm going to place them. Things that are in draft form that will be, that will see comment from the public on, I will also put there. It is, it is a little sparse now, but I wanted to make sure everyone is aware that that site, that landing page exists and it's somewhere we can, we can continue to populate with items. I think after this evening, and I have a subsequent conversation with our consultants to rectify some of those issues you just identified, Mary, I will get the most recent draft up for additional comment before coming back to you to seek adoption of the plan.
Good.
All right.
So you can, you can post this, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you were talking about five workshops, which I think is great, right? I'll volunteer and help facilitate and be a recorder and all that stuff, whatever you need. And you were thinking of, you know, having a kickoff and then like an ending one and then kind of have, you know, ones that are on the built environment, you know, what are they, the built environment?
Built systems, natural systems, community systems.
And community systems and natural systems, okay. So on the Gantt chart, right, this thing?
Yes.
These are like the elements of the plan.
Yes.
Right? So when you do the built environment, do you concentrate on some of these?
Some of them-
Or do you concentrate on all of them?
We did that in our initial plan. We kind of laid out which chapters would apply to which. And there's so much crossover, it's a little bit difficult to, I think, manage them in that way. Which is why I think it'd be a good approach to define the existing condition of place types in the town so that we can assess in these workshops, the built, like if it's built, if we're having a workshop on built systems, we can do workshopping around the specific places as it pertains to the built systems of that place. And then we can have a workshop where it's natural systems. We assess those place types through the lens of the natural systems. I think that's a good way to structure it.
So there's one set of place types used in each?
So say, say our workshop, the first one is built systems.
Yep.
Okay. And in our kickoff meeting, we would obviously want to educate people about the RFP and what we're talking about. But once we've done that and we have a map of these different places, we would have, say, various tables set up. And each table represents a different place type. And then we ask specific questions about the built systems in that place type.
I gotcha.
About the existing condition, what you like about it, what you hate about it, where you want it to go in the future. And then we would do the same pursuant to each place type within that certain system. Now, this is just a recommendation, but I really think the best way to demonstrate consistency with the RFP without having the commission be prescriptive with regard to the contents of the plan is to just structure the engagement program within that framework.
Right.
And then the engagement platform, the engagement program itself demonstrates that consistency. So that would be my recommendation to structure it something like that. I think it would need some refinement. And I think there's a certain amount of education that needs to occur with the folks that are participating, which we would want to do well in our kickoff meeting and kind of hammer home that are being mailed out or on our website utilizing the engagement platform. Because we can also, utilizing Citizen Lab, set up these design workshops in digital space.
Great.
So, I mean, we can meet in person and do this, but we'll also be collecting feedback from a multitude of people utilizing these digital platforms. So it's almost like these public charrettes will be ongoing because those, they call them like project folders, but we can have multiple project folders within our engagement platform that can live throughout the life of the engagement. So just if we have an engagement thing from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., it's not going to end at 8:00 p.m. It's going to be ongoing until we close out the program. So that's a benefit of that tool.
Did that answer your, Mary, does that clarify for you?
Yes, and I don't, you guys weren't looking at the screen, I was nodding. So, thank you.
I don't know where to look.
Anyways, I had something else. Oh, gosh, oh, my cat. Hold on. My cat just like, almost like threw me off. Okay. Oh, all right, so you're, you're starting to meet with different boards and committees, right, Evan?
Yes, thank you. Our site visit with consultants is on February 10th. That day, we chose that day because the sewer commission meets at 2:00 and in the evening, the conservation commission meets at 2:00. So it was a good way to kill three birds with one stone. I thought it would be beneficial for our consultants to meet with the sewer commission to get a good grasp of the work that they're doing in implementing the wastewater plan. And it would be good for the sewer commissioners to hear the work we're doing with updating the local comprehensive plan. And same for the conservation commission. I just think, I think eventually, certainly all the regulatory boards and other stakeholders will have that level of involvement. But we're starting with those two, particularly with the sewer commissioners who are undertaking a, you know, equally important public works project. So we want to make sure that their, our consultants are well aware of the activities and issues that they're managing. So that'll be on February 10th.
Great. And you're gonna, you're gonna keep us informed of any other board and committee, right?
I will do that.
Yeah, that'd be great in case I want to tune in.
Those are the only ones on the docket so far, but I'll update you further as any new ones come along.
Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to ask, so we have these, we have these stakeholder interviews and boards and committee meetings and then targeted stakeholder and community group outreach. You have, there's two blue sections on that. And so, you know, I know we're going to have five workshops. I, I, I think it's important that when you have groups of stakeholders coming together, being interviewed, that kind of stuff, that that's kind of in a public format of some type. For example, if, like a stakeholder is the Chamber of Commerce, right? And they meet. And their meetings are not, you know, in a public spot or zoomed out like the Conservation Commission. So how can I participate, how can we all, the planning board, participate in those meetings? Because, like, to me, well, not to me, but to everybody, it should be important to hear what the chamber commerce, you know, has to say.
I think so too. That's very important.
All right, I can discuss how we're going to facilitate those stakeholder, I guess, focus groups and interviews to get an understanding of how Weston and Sampson conducts them with other communities and what opportunities we would have for opportunity, involvement of the board in real time, whether that's posting an agenda or doing it virtually. I'll need to get a little bit of feedback from them in that regard, but I don't see any particular issues with facilitating something whereas you have more direct involvement in those processes.
That's wonderful because I think transparency in the community is just, you know, really key right now. And, you know, what I find is that with COVID, people are, have more time to be engaged in civic activities. And I don't know why, but it's true. People are turning out in social media, but anyways. Hey, keep pushing the loop up that.
I will.
All right.
Anything else in the LCP?
I had one quick question. At the top of that calendar, it says public website launch in March. The Citizen Lab document says recommended contract start date March 1st, anticipated platform launch May 1st.
Don't worry about it.
Good, thank you. That's the right answer.
Perfect.
They said that they have no problem building out the webpage before we have the contract signed.
Perfect.
So that's what we're doing.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, anything else in the LCP?
I'm good, thank you. Oh, I'm just, I applaud you putting stuff up on the website. People are dying to read it. They love this stuff. Thank you.
We'll get more up there, Mary, too.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to keep going down my, my reports. I've been, just by way of background, there used to be-
Evan, Evan, hold on a second, ask your question.
Yeah, Joe.
I can barely hear, are you six feet away from John?
Yeah, well, I have my phone on, but I think there's like an echo.
I can't hear you.
Here, I'm gonna move. I'm gonna move, I'll sit right next to him. I'm gonna go on a journey, folks.
What if you speak into the mic?
I just can't hear you.
I'm having a hard time hearing him too.
All right, he's on his way.
Like the tour of the meeting room. We're all gonna meet in person next time, right?
Yes, we are.
Yes, yes.
All right, y'all can hear me?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, Dennis.
Better?
All right, so I've been having, I had a couple of great conversations relatively recently with the conservation agent. I've also heard from some local land conservancies. And I've been giving thought about the, about open space acquisitions because acquiring open space has always been a priority of the town. And there have been some opportunities for open space acquisitions. However, the town currently, in my opinion, in my, in consultation with the conservation agent, is lacking the mechanism for which to approach property owners to facilitate that negotiation, which I think, I think is an issue. And in years past, there was an open space committee, whereas the town planner would recommend parcels of open space interest, of conservation interest. And the open space committee would facilitate a negotiation who would eventually recommend, I think, either the CPC or some other entity or partnership of entities to acquire open space. And so especially after I did the build-out where we identified a number of large parcels that are still subdividable for single-family construction, it led me to think, you know, we ought to begin rethinking about how to acquire those properties which are included in our Conservation, Open Space, and Recreation Plan. And, you know, personally, I don't, the town, I don't feel like it's appropriate for the town planner to contact a private property owner on behalf of the town of Mashpee and say, hey, do you want to sell your land? So I'm, I'm suggesting that we request this board of, the select board revive the open space committee, especially in consideration of the LCP update and consideration of the significant interest in preserving what is remaining for open space that is of conservation value. So it's merely a suggestion I wanted to raise it to you because A, I'm not 100% certain on the status of the open space committee. From the records that I was able to go back to, it seems like the last official actions of the open space committee were about seven years ago, around 2015. And my assumption is that it just kind of fizzled out as opportunities for acquisition kind of declined because whether property owners were just not willing to engage or, you know, whatever the reasons were, it just has not been active.
So does the committee still exist?
I, well, the question, I don't know if it's ever been disbanded. I don't know if there's currently members of the open space committee. I don't know if there's a chairman. But I wanted to just suggest to the board that we, you know, put in a request to the select board to reestablish and reaffirm the open space committee and its roles and responsibilities so that, you know, myself and the conservation agent, the planning board and others, when opportunities arise or when parcels are identified for acquisition, we have an official chain of communication that represents the interests of the town in that regard, which currently doesn't exist. I just think it's a prudent time to do this. Land is very scarce. We all know it's getting more expensive. The reality is acquiring some of the larger parcels are going to require partnerships to do. And I think a committee is the appropriate entity to aid and negotiate, but also to facilitate those funding partnerships. So I don't know if there's any action I'm asking of you tonight. I just wanted to raise this as, you know, as something that's just kind of gone by the wayside over the past seven years. And if there's interest in continued open space acquisitions based on, and based on everything that I've discerned from hearing people speak at CPC meetings and hearing from other folks at planning board meetings, the community wants to see this happen. And I think establishing, re-establishing the open space committee would go a long way towards that, that line of negotiation that needs to occur when you're dealing with real estate transactions.
So what are we gonna do, send a letter to the select board? Are both established for this? Are you gonna talk to them, Evan? Because I'm in favor of this.
Would you like me to draft a memo for your consideration at our next meeting?
Yeah, I would.
Sounds good.
All right, I can do that. And then-
Evan, I don't know if you know this, but I brought this idea up to the community presentation at the last meeting.
Like minds, Mary.
Good.
I didn't know that, so that's great.
So you'll draft a letter for our next meeting?
I'll draft a letter for your next meeting.
Good.
The next item is a bit of a bigger issue. The Popanasset Overlay District. I think staff have been noticing increasing challenges in the Popanasset area, particularly as it pertains to homes that are being raised and replaced and the construction methods that property owners are taking advantage of to facilitate their new home construction that I think are generally problematic. And there was one recent petition to the Board of Appeals that kind of tipped the scales for me that I felt like it was, it was time to approach the issue with the board and perhaps think about the Popanasset Overlay District and its intent and what's happening on the ground in a more holistic manner alongside you all and the neighborhood, as well as the ZBA, who's the one enforcing and issuing special permits for these things. But what we're essentially seeing happen is, you know, Popanasset has a unique topography. It has a high water table and ever-rising. And as a result, they're dealing with significant drainage challenges. And on top of that, there's a significant economic interest for folks to raise and replace their homes. And in the Popanasset Overlay District, you have a maximum lot coverage of 25%, which is greater than the 20 typically allowed, and a maximum building height of 30 feet, which is lower than 35 feet that is generally allowed elsewhere. Kind of in recognition that it's the densest neighborhood in the town. There's a very unique historic community character. But we're starting to really lose a lot of that character and a lot of those infrastructure challenges are being burdened by the methods with which these homes are being raised and replaced. Notably, homes in Popanasset that are in the floodplain, there's an interest for property owners to raise themselves out of the floodplain, both economic because flood insurance is cheaper, but also they want to preserve the existence of their asset as sea levels continue to rise, as storm surge, and the drainage. Water has nowhere to go in the neighborhood. And what they're doing, you know, you're generally measuring a building height from the average natural grade of the property to the peak of the roof. But what we're seeing happen is property owners often are utilizing retaining walls around their lot lines and bringing in multiple feet of fill, filling in that floodplain and then measuring their building height from that manipulated grade to the roof. And then, so not only do you have now a looming structure because you've manipulated the grade, you also have a floodplain issue because the water that used to go there is now going to the street with nowhere to drain to. And I had conversations with representatives from the Popanasset Beach Association probably about a year, maybe two years ago now, where these issues kind of started to percolate a little bit. two years ago now, where these issues kind of started to percolate a little bit. And we contemplated some strategies for which we could understand and perhaps remedy the problem. But I think the nature of the issue is super, is, is complex and one that will require some engagement with the neighborhood to assess. And I think the Board of Appeals needs to understand a little bit of the complexity that their decision-making, that their decision, the complex nature of the problems that their decisions are having an impact on. And I think it's just a prudent time to review the Popanasset Overlay in a holistic manner, to recognize that, A, we want to preserve the unique community character of the place, recognize the unique infrastructural constraints that the area has, but also recognize that we need to probably assess in some detail, things like lot coverage and building height as it pertains to the adaptability of new homes to climate change impacts and rising water tables. Because the way our zoning works now is if you were, for example, utilize FEMA-certified method of putting your house on stilts, you want to make sure your building height is measured not from the average natural grade, but probably from the first, the finished first floor elevation. Otherwise, you're going to be living in a very small house on stilts, or it's not going to be feasible. I don't have a solution now. I think this is too complex to come up with any answers right now, but I think the neighborhood is interested in a dialogue with the planning board. I think it would be prudent to involve the building department and the zoning board of appeals to think about if there's anything that could be done from a land use regulation perspective, what it might be, or if it's just about implementing a set of more strict standards, or just asking the Board of Appeals to be very strict with regard to their interpretations of what is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Because if you can recall, the raise and replace language is applicable townwide. And it allows you to continue, extend or alter pre-existing non-conformities of, of, of a pre-existing non-conforming structure if it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, which is a subjective measure. And on a case-by-case basis, house by house, you know, continuing or extending a setback issue or a lot coverage issue isn't perceived to be all that much of a, a problem. But as you take it at a neighborhood scale, and as you raise and replace an entire neighborhood, those impacts accumulate. And I just think we need to understand where, how the current regulation is having an, an impact on that neighborhood. So I'd like to suggest we invite the Popanasset Beach Association and to discuss the, the issues that they're experiencing, so that we can begin to understand the problem a little bit better before we suggest solutions. Because the zoning board of appeals contemplated submitting an article to the selectmen for this May that would have impacted this, this, this issue without giving it much thought holistically or with any engagement with the neighborhood, which I've suggested isn't the best approach here. And they've agreed to not pursue any zoning changes until we've had an appropriate conversation amongst you all and with the neighborhood.
Would we, should we have a, when, when we have the neighborhood in, have the Board of, Board of Appeals have a joint meeting?
I think it would, I think it would be a very prudent approach. And I also want to note that, you know, we, we do, we did go through our municipal vulnerability preparedness program. We have one action grant award over at Santuitt Pond, but I think this might be, this might fit the bill for a future action grant to assess land use strategies for a sensitive residential neighborhood with significant floodplain challenges. And we can assess, utilize state funds through an MVP action grant program to, to assess and seek recommendations on, on zoning solutions.
Great.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Can I say something?
Yep, go ahead, Mary.
So when that raise and replace article came up, I don't know, seven, I don't know, four or five years ago, I guess. And it passed, right?
Yeah.
I'm researching other towns and how they deal with this. And P-Town has this kind of raise and replace bylaw that it's very strict. I think it might be too strict for Popanasset. But, and then I think Barnstable has a raise and replace where they allow things to be rebuilt, but they have to stay in the community character.
Yeah.
So there, there's already some work on the Cape to, to, for that. You might want to look at that. They might, it may have some suggestive language for our bylaw.
That sounds good. I know when, when I first started, raise and replace was kind of the salient topic. And I had suggested to the building commissioner at the time, a more, somewhat of a checklist of approvals, where if certain conditions apply here, then you review, you would allow it on this basis. And it wasn't supported at the time. Well, one thing I think is important in Popanasset uniquely than everywhere else, is when you get into, when you're regulating for a desired form or specific form, utilizing only something like maximum building height and lot coverage, because that's pretty much all it is, there's a, there's not a lot of predictability around what happens in, in the neighborhood, at, at a neighborhood scale. So I think we could, I think it's an opportunity to understand that you, we can be flexible with regard to, I think, those issues if certain criteria are met with regard to architecture in the built form. I, and again, I, I said this to Glenn, actually Glenn McCarthy, who submitted a letter, did ask that you read it into the record. I don't know if the board is amenable to that, but he specifically asked that I do that. That's up to you.
It is-
Can I say something first?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, but Mary, to your point, you know, as someone who, I, I did grow up in Popanasset, and I would, I love the Cape Cod character. And people who I know, who may be listening, will probably slap me for not knowing this. I forget the developer in the 50s, Jack something, please don't quote me, but he came through Popanasset and put, and made, and developed lots with these three-bedroom set cotton ranches. To me, it's not Cape Cod, but that's what he built economically, and that's where it went through. But to me, that's not Cape Cod. So maybe not, I, I hear what you're saying, Mary, but make it more, you know, aesthetically pleasing, or, but, or how it used to be. Unlike, you know, down in Provincetown and other parts of the old part of the Cape, when they had great historic significance with their buildings. But that's not what we, was, was here.
Right, right. No, you're right. Yeah, it's just architectural standards, right? You want to put in architectural standards into it. That's all.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to be stuck to the, the print of what it was, because that was not a great architectural point for Cape Cod, you know.
Yeah, I agree with you, Joe.
That's the only point.
Yep.
Only thing I can say, though, the, the drainage down there is horrible. And every time they build a new house, it puts more pressure on the water table, and it makes it even worse, because they have to put a lot more fill in there. Like I said, they put those retainer walls to raise the house up, but all that fills press them down.
Yeah, it's a real problem.
And the water tables rise. And every time it rains, it, they can't go anywhere.
Yeah. I think it's really important that we understand tho, those issues as, as they impact the rest of the neighborhood. The water needs somewhere to go, and it's running out of space to go, because the water table's too high. And so I think we need to understand that there's going to be continued interest in, in replacing these homes. And there's going to be continued interest in making them sustainable to climate change impacts and sustainable to flooding. But we need to understand that if we're going to have a restrictive height limit, then our ability to raise homes becomes more challenging. So we just, we need to understand this from the neighborhood perspective, so that we can approach a potential zoning solution. I'm not saying it's, it's necessary, but I think it's becoming a, a prevalent enough problem where we need to define it a little bit better and understand it, so we can make recommendations moving forward.
You, you basically have said what was in Mr. McCarthy's letter. I would ask you, it's in your package, everybody. And there's some pretty, pretty compelling images that he sent along with his letter.
That's from the October storm.
That I'd ask you to take a look at. Yeah, so I-
Some compelling images there, but I can also, not to mention water level issues, because I can see it in, you know, in my basement bowl, but sometimes it's dry. But one of the particular pictures was looking upon was a, a sewer drain that has never been cleared out by the PVA and needs to be taken care of. And they've done a few of them, but not to make that point.
Understood.
One picture was Uncle Edwards, which just needs to be grudged out.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the reality is, these issues are going to continue to grow for all, for all coastal communities. So if we're not prepared to adapt, they're going to have to retreat. So I'd like, I'd like to figure out how we can help property owners on the coastline, especially where floodplain impacts are going to be more substantial, to help their property, help them adapt in a manner that's not detrimental to the character of their neighborhood, or having a detrimental effect on the infrastructure of the neighborhood. So with that, I'll, I'll, I'll work on communicating with representatives from the Popanasset Beach Association. And I'd like to send a memorandum to the Board of Appeals relative to this discussion, to let them know our intent to invite them in for a joint meeting with them, if the board's okay with that.
Yeah, well-
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Draft that for the next meeting?
Sure.
That'd be great. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay. Thank you, Evan. One more.
Last thing is, DLTA funding has been made. The first solicitation has gone out for the district local technical assistance funding managed by the Cape Cod Commission. Now, the, my department did submit an application to the CPC for funding to do the housing production plan. And the CPC was kind to fund, to submit an article for $50,000, which is, I think, the totality of what the request would be. But I noted in my application that we would seek supplemental funding from this particular funding source. And, and Mary can probably, tell me if I, if I understood this wrong, but it's, there seemed to be an intent from the CPC for me to continue seeking this funding, so that, and utilize, tapping into that $25,000 if awarded from the DLTA, and turning back $25,000 to the CPC accounts. Is that what, did I understand that right?
Right. You'll, you'll use the, the state money first, and then, you know, you know, dip into the CPA money if it's approved by town meeting.
All right. So I just want to let you know that this, this funding source has been made available, and my department's intending on submitting an application, as I told the CPC I would, for $25,000 for the HPP. So, again, that's it. I don't, I don't need a motion or anything. I just wanted you to be aware that that was available. And I, I don't know if there's any restrictions about the number of applications you can make to DLTA, but, you know, I will put it to the board if there are other projects that might fit the bill, to let me know. Maybe between now and our next meeting. There's nothing that I've identified. The, the challenge of this funding source is that it has a, a small contract term, so you can't really do major projects.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I'd, I'd go for it. I don't have any ideas. I'd go for this one.
Yeah, I had, I had suggested an additional, after we talked about the Popanasset Overlay District, that that might qualify, but that's going to be longer than a year.
I think an MVP action grant might be suitable for that.
Good.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you, Evan. Okay, committee reports. Cape Cod Commission?
Yep. So the Cape Cod Commission voted to send an amendment to their administrative reg to the Assembly of Delegates, that a citizens' petition would require 750 signatures up from the previous 100, number of 100 signatures needed. They also are proposing a slight change to the RPP update process. It gives them a little bit more flexibility on the end date. And also, after an RPP update is adopted, there'd be a one-year safe harbor, where a citizens' petition could not be submitted. So that was the big news there. There was a recent change to NEPA, the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, that if, if an environmental impact report was required because it, a project was near an environmental justice neighborhood, that it would automatically trigger a, a DRI by the Cape Cod Commission. Because any, any project that triggers a NEPA environmental impact report automatically triggers a review by the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. So that change to the NEPA law, saying that environmental justice neighborhoods are, could trigger an automatic environmental impact report, had the Cape Cod Commission concerned that they would have a flood of DRI reviews to do. But the, the commission opted to take no action at this time to see, to see if there's going to be a flood of new applications to them. I, you know, I did testify, I was concerned that, you know, environmental justice neighborhoods are, are neighborhoods that are poor, or have a disproportionate number of minority households. So I was a little bit disturbed that they were using that, that indicator to, to kind of re, relook at exemptions of projects from developments of regional impact review. But they luckily took no action on that. They're going to see if this new NEPA revision, with regards to environmental justice neighborhoods, really does trigger more work for them or not. So, um, that was, that's-
What do we pay them for, though? You know, I mean, they get paid well, and they're scared to get a little more work. I don't understand that.
I'm on them.
We're good.
It grew out, Mary.
Community Preservation Committee.
No meeting.
Design Review.
Uh, Design Review, I'll take if the town planner forgot. There was no plan meeting, but there was a Design Review, only one, which was for the Triple M, which is on Echo Road. They put a design for a new building, which we appreciated. If you've been down there, it's kind of a, doesn't fit the aesthetics of the town, a metal building, but they're putting together a very nice, architecturally sound Cape Cod-style building with nice colors, and it's going to look nice.
Good. You said there was no plan review?
No plan review.
Environment, there was no environmental oversight committee. Historic District Commission?
No meeting.
Military Civilian Advisory Council.
No meeting.
All right.
Shocking.
Uh, there are, as I have referenced, is a number of correspondents in the package. Anything else? Anybody have anything?
Yeah. If we meet this way again, I'm going to be sick.
Dennis, you know, I, I want to apologize to the board. There was a lot, there was lack of clarity about what we were supposed to be doing. And so I had perceived an intent, particularly because of the actions of the select board to meet virtually, that that was where all boards should go. But I did raise this as an issue at our department head meeting this morning. And it's really at the discretion of the board members and their comfort level, and at the discretion of the chair. I did receive a number of responses, and it seems to be the intent of the board to continue wish, and wishing to meet in person.
Right.
So, yes, our meetings forthwith-
I could have my Design Report in person, as I talked to the health agent, and it is the recommendation of each board.
So, yes, I can, I will be posting agenda forthwith, assuming no additional changes occur. And God knows in this world what, what's going to come next. We'll be meeting in person, and this is going to be kind of an outlier meeting in the short term. So apologies if there was any confusion approaching this meeting. But moving forward, it'll be back to in-person status quo.
Good.
Great.
Awesome.
I'll make a motion via chair.
I'll second that motion, Dennis.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Good meeting. Thanks, everybody.
Jack, I can't see you, but how you doing?
I'm doing good. How you doing?
Not bad.
How are you?
I had a problem with my, I had a problem with my computer, so I ran over here.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.